You are on the record.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, the eighteenth of January, and the time is ten o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us are, introduce yourself for the record.
Jess Soslo, operations.
Tim Sturgis, Park's office.
Bruce Crisco, operations.
Sean Rain, paramedic.
Jennifer Holly Grant, specialist.
Brett Harding, coroner's office.
Richard Beck, development services.
IT guy.
Bob Perkins, ADK procurement.
Bob McQuaid, assessor.
Phil McGrane, clerk.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda? Oh, on the board, yeah. Up on the, uh, the bridge, we have Adam Schroeder, Elizabeth Mon, Camille Atkins, and Evan Amadon. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, moving into unfinished business, may I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Let's second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have three unfinished business items this morning. Uh, we'll have Bob Bradman to the record, and go ahead, proceed.
All right. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Before you this morning, we have, uh, three items under unfinished business, first of which is a final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-two-zero-zero-five. And, uh, the evaluation team has completed the evaluations and the interview, and would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
If you could read the letter.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Letter dated January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to the Board of AD County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-two-zero-zero-five. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two-two-zero-zero-five. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring and interviews. The final rankings in order of evaluation score are as follows. Number one, Armada LTD with a score of a hundred and ten point two-nine. Number two, Emergency Preparedness Solutions LLC with a score of a hundred and four point two-three. Number three, Tetra Tech Incorporated with a score of a hundred and three point one-eight. Number four, Costant Associates Incorporated with a score of ninety-eight point nine-one. And number five, Connect Consulting Services with a score of fifty point nine-zero. It is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-two-zero-zero-five to Armada LTD as the number one ranked proposer.
And that was a hundred and ten point two-nine.
That was, that's correct.
All right. Any discussion from the board? If not, uh, I'll accept the motion.
Okay. Nothing? Okay. Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to accept the final rankings and recommendations of the evaluation committee and award. RFP two-two-zero-zero-five, Ada County Mass Fatality and Mass Casualty Management Plans to Armada LTD and with a score of a hundred and ten point two-nine.
Second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll now take up the final award, uh, ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-two-zero-zero-eight, design build for Ada County landfill Wi-Fi tower. Bob?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, the evaluation team has completed the evaluations of the sole proposal for this project, and would like to submit an award recommendation letter.
If you could read the letter for the record.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Uh, letter dated, uh, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-two-zero-zero-eight. Uh, dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the sole response for RFP two-two-zero-zero-eight. A final ranking of the qualified candidate was determined by evaluation scoring. The final ranking in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Idaho Tower Construction Company LLC, and they had a score of ninety point zero-zero. It is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-two-zero-zero-eight to Idaho Tower Construction Company LLC as the number one ranked proposer.
Thank you. Is there, uh, any discussion from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is that pretty typical for a Wi-Fi tower to just have one? Or is that unusual?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, this, uh, uh, we typically don't see a whole lot of, uh, folks entering into the, uh, tower building. Uh, Idaho Tower Construction Company is one of them. Day Wireless was at our, our pre-proposal meeting, but they declined to bid on this project. And, um, uh, just not a whole lot of builders in this particular specialty.
Okay.
This is a special project, Commissioner, that, um, is putting up, basically built on bolts and all of the landfill. Part of a project that wasn't anticipated by, um, IT department, and we can, uh, assist.
Okay. It doesn't concern you that there was only one company bidding?
Uh, great. Idaho Tower is very good company.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Does this bind us to any particular wireless company or their service?
No, it's just a construction company.
It's just the poles and attachment still poles.
Right.
Right. Okay, uh, if there are no further discussion, I'll accept a bit, a, a, a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the final rankings and recommendation of the evaluation committee and award RFP two-two-zero-zero-eight, design build for Ada County landfill Wi-Fi tower installation to Idaho Tower Construction Company LLC with a score of ninety point zero-zero.
Second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, moving along, we have final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two-two-zero-one-eight, Ada County Mosquito Abatement District aerial application. Bob?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, the evaluation team for RFP two-two-zero-one-eight, the Ada County Mosquito Abatement District aerial application, has completed the evaluations, and would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
If you could read that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. A letter dated, uh, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-two-zero-one-eight. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the two responses for RFP two-two-zero-one-eight. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final ranking in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Vector Disease Control International LLC with a score of ninety-five point three-three. And number two, Valley Air LLC with a score of forty point one-seven. It is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-two-zero-one-eight to Vector Disease Control International LLC as the number one ranked proposer.
Okay, is there discussion from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So, these are aerials. Um, and last year, we had a kind of a little bit of a hiccup, and Adam, you can kind of walk me through this, where they were having to fly in and go through Salt Lake City, and there was weather, and timing was of the essence, and all sorts of things, so... Um, I'm wondering, on this one, were we able to take in responsible versus and responsive as well, or just responsive?
Well, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, yes, so, on an RFP, we were able to look at several different factors, including price, but, um, experience, qualifications, all that played into, uh, the, uh, evaluation of this proposal.
So, the responsible side. So, my question is then, can we take in, uh, local versus non-local?
Um, I don't believe that, that we can, uh, take a local company over a non-local company. It's not in our statutes to do, uh, a local preference, per se.
Can we change that at some point through legislation?
Uh, perhaps, we can. Um, but, uh, one of the things that, uh, we always want to take, one of the good things about the RFP process is when, for example, when Adam's sitting on the evaluation team, they get a chance to see the entire body of work that a proposer submits. And so, for example, with Vector Disease Control International, they could take a look at all the work that they've done in the past. They compared that to what Valley Air did, which is a local company here, and the determination was that, uh, uh, Vector Disease Control actually had better equipment and was better, more well-equipped to, uh, provide a service to Adam and his department.
Okay, even though that they're, they're out of, out of the state?
That is correct.
Maybe we can have Adam speak to this a little bit, because I, Adam, I think you understand my concern based on what happened last year.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, yes, um, so, um, we chose Vector Disease Control International, um, primarily because they have the equipment and the experience to, uh, complete the applications. Valley Air, um, uh, frankly, does not have the kind of plants that conform these types of applications and, uh, has no experience with that, so we need somebody that's highly experienced and has a lot of, uh, uh, well, as far as the equipment goes, the airplanes are, um, exactly to spec. The, um, application equipment is exactly to spec, so, um, we, and, and they're out of Ogden actually, so they're not really that far away, um, as far as meeting our deadlines for applications, so we know that they can respond within that forty-eight hour time period. Um, so that really factors in heavily when we're talking about how we evaluate these RFPs.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, Adam, a phone, a question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Um, so, why here, Canyon County, and I believe it was Gem County sprayed like two weeks or three weeks before we did last year? Is there some way we could maybe do a coordinated effort, and so we're all doing it at the same time?
Commissioner Kenyon, uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, traditionally, we do like to do things that way. However, um, sometimes in Canyon County and in Gem County, they face different mosquito pressure than we do, especially considering, uh, Lake Lowell and, and its impact on the area as far as mosquito, uh, developments. So, a lot of times, the Canyon County is flying much earlier than we do, just because of the environmental circumstances of mosquito habitat out there, and sometimes, uh, Gem County does that as well, um, just because they're so, uh, rural. But, uh, we try to do our best to control everything with our ground operations, and, but if, uh, if there is a coordinated effort and we do see the kind of pressure that we saw last year, it sparks west Nile moving forward or westward, then we will absolutely coordinate effort.
And then, one of the things that I think we noticed this last year is because probably the drought, is we saw the, the big ponds and the big parks become stagnant, water and became mosquito breeding grounds probably more sooner than we normally would have. Is that correct?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Ma- uh, Mr. Kenyon, yes, uh, there were several factors that, uh, kind of precipitated that mosquito development surge that we saw, um, and part of it was drought. And, you know, like we saw in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, when we have the opposite type circumstances, when we have heavy flooding, and we do have other types of mosquito pressure just based on species and where they, where their habitats are and how they develop, so, um, we could be facing one of either of those situations next year, but, uh, we're hoping it's going to be a cool more year.
So, just wanted to make sure we can respond in a timely manner. Again, we, we lost at least one person last year from West Nile, West Nile. Um, we don't want to have that happen again if we can prevent it.
Yes, and relative to the...
Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioner.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yes, I, I absolutely agree. Uh, that forty-eight hour time period, BDCI, has in the past been very, very responsive. Um, so, we do plan, if, if, if the commission decides that it's a good idea to take an aerial application step, then that will happen within a matter of forty-eight hours, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, this one makes me a little bit nervous, but only because I think of all the issues last year, this was when I got the most, you know, personal contacts, emails, phone calls, texts. Um, I guess, so my question is, if we approve this proposal, are you cutting Vector a check immediately? Or do we monitor our West Nile tests and then make a decision as we, um, you know, find out more about the conditions?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, um, no, absolutely not. We're not, uh, cutting them a check. We're actually just contracting them. It's, it's essentially a retainer, so if we do face that type of mosquito pressure where an aerial application is warranted, then you guys absolutely have steps that we went through last year, that we'll go through those same types of steps before we, uh, actually, uh, bring them in to, uh, do the application. So, this is, uh, this contract is essentially a retainer, and we can then, um, prolong the contract year after year, uh, until it ends. I, I believe Bob can speak to that. Uh, once we are contracted, then we'll have a couple of extension periods that will allow us to then, you know, just have them available for when we need them.
Okay. Did you want to respond to that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Ultimately, it's a contract that we hope we don't have to use.
Exactly.
And it's there in place in case we do. Uh, just in terms of pricing between the two, uh, proposers, uh, BDCI proposed a price of eighty cents per acre, and where Valley Air proposed a price of a, a dollar nineteen per acre. So, BDCI has, has a pretty good price. Uh, in fact, they haven't raised their price in the years that we've contracted with them.
Now, I know some states have, Bob, have a, a, a local preference where they give a bidder a little advantage.
The state does.
I don't know if the state does or not. Does the state have that?
I'm not, uh, familiar with, uh, if the state does or not. I know that, uh, sometimes local preference, um, um, gets challenged in court quite a bit, and so we have to be mindful of that.
Right.
But, uh, um, there are things like within our, our RFP that we can do to, um, um, take a look at, you know, area vendors as far as an evaluation criteria.
All right, thanks, Bob. Um, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the final ranking and a board recommendation of the evaluation committee and award RFP two-two-zero-one-eight, Ada County Mosquito Abatement District aerial application to Vector Disease Control International LLC with a scoring of ninety-five point three-three and the amount of eighty cents per acre.
Second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Bob, uh, we're moving along to, uh, resolutions. We have three resolutions this morning. Um, I will open up the, uh, public hearing on resolution two-seven-one-two, resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Emergency Rental Assistance Consolidated Appropriations Act, ERAP two budget. Is there anyone here to testify? Okay, nobody's here to testify. Um, I'll close the public hearing on two, on resolution number two-seven-one-two. What's the pleasure of the board?
Yes, Mr. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve resolution number two-seven-one-two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, and just for the record, the amount is three million eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand seven-hundred-and-forty dollars.
And it is a reallocated amount that, uh, that the state did not use in the statewide application.
Yep.
So, the money is just being reallocated from the state to the Ada County. Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll now open the, uh, public hearing on resolution number two-seven-one-three, ARPA resolution number six for approved approval of allowable expenditures from the American Rescue Plan Fund Act Fund Budget. Uh, is there, is there anyone here to make a presentation or a discussion on this, on this motion, on this, uh, resolution?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank all the, um, committee members that were on the technical committee and all the way through this process, um, for really vetting all of these projects really well. And then, when they were presented to us, it was, um, much easier. We tabled a lot for more information, but we were able to get that ones here listed, uh, through today, so we can start to put that money to good use.
I think that's, uh, that is, that is good, and hopefully that, uh, we, as we continue down this path with the, all these ARPA dollars, we can take the local taxpayers into consideration and save tax money as, as well. So, uh, is there, is there any more discussion on, uh, on resolution number two-seven-one-three? If not, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-one-three. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve resolution number two-seven-one-three as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll now open the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-one-four, resolution for the destruction of election records. Is there, is there any discussion on the destruction of election records?
Bonfire?
No, it's just standard stuff as we go through the site, you know, they're on, yeah, just, these are the old election records. These would be from the city elections two years ago, as well as some others. Uh, we monitor closely the retention schedule, right, and we have exactly the amount of space. When one election comes up, we move stuff, so...
Is it two years, Ellen, do you...
Uh, it depends on the item, so two years is the shortest period of time. Some items, five, and some are permanent, but, so, we, we monitor that, but we have just about the right amount of shelving to rotate through, so...
Okay.
Okay, is there, uh, for the, anyone else wish to offer testimony or discussion on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two-seven-one-four. Uh, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution two-seven-one-four as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, moving on. We have, uh, two procurement items this morning. Beginning with the first one, it's, uh, opening of, uh, RFP two-two-zero-one-zero, Ada County Fleet Management Consulting Services for two thousand twenty-two. Bob?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received five proposals for RFP two-two-zero-one-zero, and Evan has our Bonfire e-Procurement system queued up and on the screen, and if you're ready for us to open.
Ready for you to.
All right, Evan, open them up. And, Mr. Chair, today, we're just looking for the name of the proposers.
Don't you miss the days of the boxes and the sharp knives and EMS, paramedic standing by?
It did give me a little more drama.
Yeah.
Well, we have the, uh, five proposers up there, and if you'd like, I'd read them in the record.
Read them into the record, sir.
All righty, so the first proposer is CST Fleet Services. The second proposer is Enterprise Fleet Management. Third proposer is Fleet Innovative Technology Systems. Fourth proposer is Matrix Consulting Group, and, uh, the fifth proposer is Mercury Associates Incorporated. So, our, uh, Mr. Chair, our evaluation team will need a little time to evaluate these, uh, proposals, and we would like to request this be tabled for final ranking and award recommendation to the February fourth, two thousand twenty-two open business meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to table the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two-two-zero-one-zero, Ada County Fleet Management Consulting Services, two thousand twenty-two, to February fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
So, I'll second that, but I have a quick question. Um, so, I know you and Steve Rutherford have been working on this for a couple of years now, year and a half, so, thank you for that.
Are you...
Are we consolidating with the sheriff's office and their fleet?
I don't, I think this is more of a consultant, kind of take a look at countywide, um, and the sheriff's office is included in that. And so, um, uh, this is, uh, to hire a consultant to help us better understand where we're at, uh, fleet management-wise, and maybe some best practices to consider, and maybe a path forward.
Right. What was our budget amount for this?
Uh, I believe it's right at about a hundred thousand dollars, if I recall correctly. I think that's what got budgeted last year.
And we're, we're going to be going through all the bids and so forth. All right.
Thank you.
Second to the motion.
That was, that was my second.
Oh, okay. Uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, uh, of table this until February fourth, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up is, uh, bid number two-two-zero-two-eight, Ada County Landfill, SEM five thousand methane detector purchase.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, the evaluation team for bid two-two-zero-two-eight has reviewed the bid submitted, and would like to submit a letter with the evaluation team's recommendation.
Okay.
All right. Uh, letter dated, uh, January eighteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two-two-zero-two-eight. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the four bids submitted, there were two bidders that did not sign their bid. There was one bidder that did, uh, submitted an alternate methane detector that did not fully conform to the specifications, and the other bidder was over bu- budget. So, therefore, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject all the bids submitted and rebid the project.
Rebid, Mr. Chair. Rebid or go out to the open market?
Uh, we're just going to go out for rebid. I think, uh, if we, uh, kind of explain to the, uh, proposers that they have to sign their bid, and, and we might get our bids back, and, and what we saw, uh, price-wise, was probably in line with what we had budgeted, so a rebid would be a good thing to do.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to reject all bids for bid two-two-zero-two-eight, Ada County Landfill, SEM five thousand methane detectors purchase. Um, and we're going to go back out for rebid.
Second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Appreciate that. We have with us our distinguished clerk, uh, Mr. Phil McGrane. Do you have a, an update for us, sir?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry I missed your watch party on Friday, but we were also watching very closely. Um, one thing to report, last Thursday evening, we did the public forum on the new precinct lines, uh, right with the proposals that we shared with you, um, and that was good. We probably had just under twenty people from the public, uh, show up and participate. Members from both major political parties were there, uh, representing kind of the parties themselves.
Where was that held?
At, oh, the elections office.
Elections office.
In our training room, and so we pulled up the maps, we walked through, we probably spent about an hour, hour and a half answering questions from the public.
Mostly precinct committee people?
Mostly precinct committee people?
Um, I'd actually say mostly just party people. I mean, I can tell you a handful of names that you know, but, uh, when I say that, you know what I mean? Like, uh, Victor was there, but also there's two staffers from the Democratic Party and others. Uh, there were some people who had interest in maps who showed up. A lot of it was just more Q and A, just about what the process, what do they represent, what are the considerations? A lot of people had questions, and thankfully, we had taken into consideration most of the things that people had represented. I know of at least one precinct that someone pointed out where we need to adjust a line, which was helpful. Um, we're, we told everyone, you know, we have a week or so, we can take feedback, and so, uh, we've been in email communication with a few folks. But I think it, it served the process really well. Like, it made people feel comfortable about what was going on. Now, I think the looming thing throughout it was, the next day was the Supreme Court hearings on redistricting. You know, depending on how that goes, we'll have to adjust lines potentially. Uh, so, kind of, we should have, uh, things locked in. We have a meeting this afternoon on it, but things locked in soon and be able to come back to you. Just counting down whenever we'll get an, or an opinion issued in terms of the case.
Because it's a redistricting year, we don't have an, an ultimate deadline, do we?
Correct. Yep.
Like in other years, we would.
Specifically because it's a redistricting year, we have flexibility.
And, Mr. Chair, we get you back on the agenda, so we'll have another conversation on the Commissioners' districts. Anthony sent over the tool, and I think we probably all had a chance to look at it online.
I need to, that's a good question. I don't have, let me check.
Okay.
But yes, we do need to get that done, because that's coming quickly.
That comes up the end of the month.
That does come up very quickly.
Is that the deadline?
Yes, so, yeah, we need to get that one done.
Yeah, there's not a lot, you'll get a lot changed in there based on.
No, it's more shifting the lines, like she discussed.
Shifting the lines, it's just a balancing. Equalize population.
Yeah. The other thing, just to know, I mean, I, this is something that's very fluid at the moment. Um, we got a shipment of some of our new elections equipment that we've been ordering to, for the new precincts, and, uh, the polite way of putting it is there is a hiccup with our most recent delivery, and so.
Pull box?
These are the electronic pull box, yeah, that we've got. Um, we have both scanners and the, uh, with Hart, I think there's something on the agenda today, where that's going fine, but the electronic pull box ran into a hiccup, so we're working, uh, very quickly with the vendor trying to remedy the situation. Uh, but it could have an impact on how we manage the precincts too, just because if we can't, you know, supply chain, just like lots of things, but if we don't have the supplies, it's tough to staff the precincts, so. Um, we're working through that. I'll keep you posted as, as I learn, there's not enough information at the moment. I'll keep you posted.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our Claims Journal. I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is Personnel Actions. Uh, may I have a motion on the Personnel Actions?
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have with us our, our distinguished assessor, Mr. Bob McQuaid. You got a good report for us?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, of course. Well.
Only good news, as Commissioner Beck would say.
I'm gonna take that back. I'm gonna talk about appraisal. I'm just gonna briefly talk about two things, appraisal on motor vehicles. Motor vehicles is just going along very well in spite of ITD. We still have problems with them, and, uh, but, but the wait times are two minutes less, and, um, everything is, is, is going okay. I do want to talk about appraisal. Uh, ML just came out with their recent data. You may have seen this. Single-family residential, uh, all property, new construction and, uh, and existing is up thirty-five percent over last year. So, actually thirty percent, single, existing is up thirty-five percent. So we're looking at, uh, increase somewhere probably to thirty, uh, thirty to thirty-five percent.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Did you read the international report that came out over the weekend? Shows that, um, Boise Valley, this area still is the most overvalued in the country.
Overvalued?
Mm-hmm.
I expect to hear them at appeal time.
Yeah, it was a, it's a significant international report that's reputable.
Where would I find that?
I'll find it for you and send it over.
It's in the Wall Street Journal.
Is it? The Weekend Edition?
I think so, yeah.
So the most overvalued and then the lowest wages, which makes Boise now the most unlivable city.
Yeah, well, anyway, that, that's, that's really interesting, uh, on what's going on, and.
Challenging.
We do have increasing, uh, mortgage rates, interest rates are going up, and that certainly is going to dampen this somewhat. Our, I don't want to call it a fear, but just something that's in the back of our mind, that if, if we see a, a significant decrease in, in appreciation. So, for example, let's say it goes up ten percent, I'm talking about July, and here we have a, a thirty percent increase. We know what that can do to, to, uh, that, that dissonance can really lead to a lot of, a lot of appeals. We don't see that, but again, that's just in the back of our mind.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's everything I've, I've got today. I've, I'm gonna talk about some legislation, but I'll do that next week.
Well, we have forty-three tax cancellations slash adjustments on the agenda. Is this about wrap, wrap up the, uh, the homeowners exemption?
Mr. Chairman, a couple more, I think just a couple more weeks and we'll work through, through all of these. And this, I'm just gonna talk about it. We're working with Senator Rice on some cleanup legislation that, I mean, certainly going with tax cancellations, but, uh, it'll be more in, on a quarterly basis rather than on, on, you know, an annual basis where everybody.
Well, he claims that the State Tax Commission misinterpreted their intent, which, you know, they can only go by what the actual statutes say, so they wanna, they wanna fix that.
Mr. Chairman.
Senator Rice told me they wanted to fix that, to where it's, it's actually prorated back.
Yes. It's what we've been working on. We ran into several complications last year, one of them being the, uh, definition of a primary dwelling place. It has to be a primary dwelling place, dwelling place as of April fifteenth. Well, the current law is in conflict with that, so we were granting homeowners exemptions to people whose primary dwelling place didn't occur until October. Uh, Steve.
Or November.
Or November, right, yeah, yeah, or David Roscheck, our, our legal counsel, pointed that out, and, uh, the Commissioners also had received applications for exemption by April fifteenth and sent that over approval or rejection to the assessor by May fifteenth. That needed to be worked out, and, uh, so the, uh, so what we just did, we just went with the AG's advice, because we knew if we were not performing the way they want us to, we would have to be answering to them, so we ignored our attorney's advice. Well, where we are now is, uh, David Roscheck, we have sent all of those, uh, those five or six recommendations for cleanup to Senator Rice, and I believe he's, I mean, he's getting the rec, uh, the legislation, the language for that legislation worked out, and we'll get that through. Hopefully, it'll go through legislature this year, bringing it together, but the proration is one of them.
Well, hopefully this will be a, a lesson that they pay attention to, to communicate more clearly and have good conversation and open dialogue with the people on the ground that need to enforce and implement the statutes.
From what I understand, it was done in a vacuum because they had a lot of these things weren't brought to the attention. But anyway, we'll work through.
We'll work through it, get it handled.
Yeah.
All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes forty-three tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-two. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hello, we have our distinguished treasurer, Elizabeth Mon. Do you have a good report for us, Elizabeth?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Um, things are going well in the Treffers Office. Very high call volume, which is pretty normal for us this time of year based on all the tax notices that have gone out between the primary roll and then the subsequent roll. Uh, a top priority for us right now is continuing to work through these tax cancellations. Um, I appreciate the efforts of the assessor and everyone working Senator Rice on a cleanup bill for this. It's taken us about fifteen to twenty minutes per tax cancellation to process these. Um, and as you know, hundreds have gone through. Um, but it takes us to analyze at parcel-by-parcel level whether or not there's been payments, and so making sure it's accurately reflected on the record. So, we'll continue to work through those, but we're probably about three weeks out from wrapping up these tax cancellations. Other than that, we're doing really well.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, uh, our treasurer, she's always just so charitable. She said there have been hundreds of tax cancellations. As of now, we've done one thousand six hundred of them.
Sixteen hundred?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work.
Right, and a lot of those, we're having to test the record manually to make the correction.
Well, make sure to thank your staff for us.
Yeah.
They'll do their work.
All right. Anything else, uh, Seth?
That's it, thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate all the hard work here, you and your staff too. Okay. Uh, next up is Development Services. We have two final plats, beginning with project number two-zero-two-one-zero-zero-nine-six-three-dash-S Dean's Landing Subdivision. Do we have anybody who wants to speak to that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for both of these, uh, these items on the agenda, they both final plats, Dean's Landing and Dondre Rose subdivision. Uh, both are two-lot residential subdivisions. Staff has reviewed the conditions of approval and finds that they have been satisfied and recommends that the Board approve plats and authorize the chair to sign them.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've reviewed, um, the documents that Development Services, um, brought forth, and I'll go ahead and move to approve application two-zero-two-one-zero-zero-nine-six-three-S Dean's Landing Subdivision and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second that.
Yeah, you've heard the, uh, motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is project two-zero-two-one-zero-zero-two-eight-seven-dash-S Dondre Rose Ranch subdivision. It's similarly situated, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Oh, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve application number two-zero-two-one-zero-zero-two-eight-seven-dash-S Dondre Rose Ranch subdivision and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have, uh, minutes, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion on the approval of the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a notice of lien and three releases of lien for weed and pest. May I have a motion?
I move to approve one notice of lien and three releases of liens for weed and pest as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Expo Idaho Interim, uh, Events. I would ask unanimous consent that we remove number two from this list for, for later discussion. That's my son, and I want to recuse myself from that discussion. So, all the other events are, are, are up for discussion. Any, any other, any discussion on all the other events except number two?
No. Go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
To approve seven interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board, and we're excluding number two.
Okay.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm recusing myself on item number two. It's two-zero-eight Flow Fest. Tim Beck is my son, and so I'm, I'm recusing myself, so whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve number two-two-zero-eight Flow Test, um, uh, interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize, um, myself to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 I'm recusing myself. Thank you.
Flow Fest, y'all ought to go. Apparently, it's like.
Matt's planning on going.
Vinyl and.
I have no idea what it is.
Spinning records, dancing, I don't know.
It's dancing, it's at the Western Town. It's at that building behind the, anyway.
Well, I know Tim too. Should I recuse myself?
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't think you have a complaint.
Okay, uh, moving along, we have, uh, uh, seven agreements, uh, on the agenda. Is there any discussion on any of the agreements? I've read them all. They seem acceptable to me.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the seven agreements as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Um, I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll be in recess. Thank you. Thank you.